Good evening and welcome to the Town of Leamington Select Board Meeting for May 30th, 2024. We will call the meeting to order at 7:03 PM and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will begin with the approval of the meeting minutes for May 23, 2024.
I make a motion that we accept the minutes as read.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Motion carries. Approval of the warrants for week number 22. Payroll warrant, uh, fifty for the amount of twenty thousand forty-three dollars and fifty-six cents. Appropriations warrant number fifty-one for a total of thirty-two thousand six hundred fifty-eight dollars and five cents. Making warrant fifty and fifty-one total, fifty-two thousand seven hundred one dollar and sixty-one cents. Out of that, uh, we paid the Bureau of Motor Vehicles, six thousand seven hundred seventy-three dollars and sixty-eight cents. UniFirst Corp., they're, they do our uniform service. We paid them ninety-four dollars and twenty-two cents. And the Treasury State of Maine for dispatch fees, a total of five thousand two hundred twenty-nine dollars and seventy-five cents. Oh, Pitney Bowes, thank you, thank you. Uh, Pitney Bowes, postage, two thousand dollars thirty, two thousand thirty-one dollars and fifty cents.
I make a motion, we accept warrants fifty and fifty-one.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Motion carries. Purchase order request. Jason, would you like to lead us with that?
Sure. Uh, fire and EMS, a request to pay ITA, fire equipment testing, four thousand nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars and ninety-six cents. A request to pay Bound Tree EMS supplies, three hundred dollars and sixteen cents. And a request to pay Cardinal Electric, work at Coventry Station, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars.
I will make a motion to approve the firing EMS purchase order requests.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Motion carries.
Uh, Parks and Rec, request to pay Co- Cody Woodcraft, work at Old Town Hall, one thousand three hundred and two dollars and fifty cents. A request to pay WB Mason for bathroom supplies for, um, Moi Modoio, four hundred and four dollars and twenty-eight cents. Quest to place sleepers, market for Moi Modoio cleanup, uh, Moi Modoio supplies, uh, seventy-six ninety-three. And a request to place sleeper's market, Ace Hardware, for supplies at Moi Modoio again, two fifty-four, forty-five.
There's a few more on the back.
Whoops. Our request to pay My Rec for software, three thousand six hundred and eighty dollars. And a request to pay Perone and Sons for pickleball and basketball lines in the new court, thirty-four hundred.
I will make a motion to approve the Parks and Rec purchase order requests.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Motion carries.
Um, municipal, a request to pay Amazon for flags and bunting, eighty-seven dollars and ninety-seven cents. A request to pay purchase power for postage, two thousand thirty-one dollars and fifty cents. And a request to pay WB Mason for envelopes, forty-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents.
I will make a request to, or I will make a motion to pay the municipal department's purchase order requests.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Motion carries.
And Public Works, a request to pay Yerkes Powers Equipment for twelve-inch pruning saw, three hundred and fifty-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents. A request to pay RN Craft for a power washer switch assembly, ninety-seven dollars. And a request to pay Freightliner of Maine for switch pack, rocker switch blanks and kit, seventy-eight dollars and seventy cents.
I will make a motion to approve the Public Works Department purchase order requests.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Motion carries. Weekly update on activities. Um, Tammy, would you mind leading us with the ACO?
Uh, thank you. Yes, uh, the ACO was in office, uh, this afternoon to speak with us. And, um, a, an animal was found to be rabid, a raccoon, in Leamington this past week. This is the second one this year, uh, so far. So we just wanted to make sure that we brought that to everybody's attention. Um, the Animal Control Officer, you can find his contact name and number on the Leamington Town webpage. Um, if you just go to leamington.net, um, it's on the, um, information directory. You just scroll down a little bit on the left and his name and phone number is right there. Um, we just want to make sure that people understand, you know, it's generally, um, common in wild animals in Maine. So to make sure that nobody ever touches a wild animal that's unknown to you. And, uh, always we're going to push for having your animals, uh, vaccinated for rabies. So that, um, if your pet comes in contact, there will be no, um, bad, um, after effects from that, your animal, uh, coming in contact. So just be aware, uh, be vigilant. So I'm sure that you've, you know, you can go and find out what the, uh, symptoms are of rabies and whatnot. It's a very painful process if a human comes in contact and has to get the shots. So we don't want that to happen to any of you. So please make sure that your, uh, pets are vaccinated and that you stay away from wild animals that aren't acting quite right.
Thank you, Tammy. Uh... Public Works Department, the washouts on the first hill at Dole's Ridge Road. That while at that location on Dole's, they were, they are removing small pines and shrubs along the hillsides to help with visibility and traffic obstructions. Next week, the hill by Tufts Lane and Limerick Line will be repaired. Uh, playground has been mulched and installed around the equipment. And last week, the court paving was completed. Over the weekend, our director had taken Engine Six and repaired the top tank leak and soldered the coolant outlet spout. There was a couple of cracks inside of that tank and that needed to be dealt with, which has been done. Uh, they have worked along, uh, Tucker Road of the twenty-five, Route twenty-five end to remove large rocks in the gravel road to help with grading. Then graded the road, pulling as much material pushed off the shoulder over for the winter. Uh, they've also repaired the two hammerhead turnarounds at Norton Road and then graded that road. South Road has also been graded. Douglas Road has a few areas of the shoulder that were repaired and col- culverts inspected and debris removed. The Beach Road has been graded, signs repaired, then reinstalled at the ramp. And the transfer station is clean, has had, uh, been cleaned and the fallen trees cut and removed. Access Road at the transfer station has several birch and pine trees causing trouble at the corner near the compactor. But the keys were cut or trimmed, chipped and removed. Um, would you like to, uh, you want to do Parks and Rec or, uh, Fire Department?
Yeah, I'll go right, Fire and Code. Uh, we'll start with the code enforcement. Uh, code enforcement, uh, office up to date as of five-nine, they have issued the following permits. Uh, two growth permits, uh, sixteen year-to-date, uh, ten building permits, uh, fifty year-to-date. Uh, electrical permits, nine and, uh, forty-two are year-to-date. Plumbing permits for, uh, for six and a total of thirty-four year-to-date. And two occupancy permits and eighteen total year-to-date. Uh, fees brought in since five-nine was nine thousand one hundred and ninety-eight dollars and eleven cents. Uh, fees brought in year-to-date, sixty-two thousand two hundred and sixty-four dollars and eleven cents. Uh, Craig's been out and done thirty-eight inspections in May. And he's made contact with several junkyard owners to move forward with cleanup and obtain necessary permits and fees. Um, they've also created inspection checklist for the gravel pits, uh, with the, uh, assist of Bonnie Loughlin. Um, we have been able to, uh, he has been able to work through all of the older outstanding permits and get many files up to date appropriately, um, uh, and reach out to, uh, them if they have any questions. And that's, uh, thank Judy was an addition and then she's been able to bowl right through a lot of these, uh, old permits in a couple of years she's gotten caught up on. So it's been great. Um, that'd be it for code. Uh, fire and EMS, uh, number of calls this week, thirteen. Month-to-date, forty-two. Year-to-date, three hundred. Uh, two fire calls and eleven EMS month-to-date. Um, let me see here, the training in-house Wednesday night, they had a station night of cleaning and organizing items. Uh, maintenance conducted and or needed, uh, they still having problems with the circuit breaker box dripping. Um, when it trips, they don't always know until the equipment batteries are dead. So it looks like we got to get that fixed. Uh, equipment, they received their second pole saw. Um, and they have ordered the ventilation system from Ply, Ply Movement as approved by the town meeting. Uh, vehicles, Department of Public Works looked at the issues on Engine Six. And, uh, looks like he fixed the radiator and the water leak temporarily on the tank. Uh, Unit Ten had an oil change in brakes and they did that Monday. Um, the special notes, they are currently fourteen calls behind last May's month-to-date and sixteen calls ahead of last year's year-to-date. Um, HB Emery's second grade class will be coming to the station on May twenty-ninth as part of their annual field trip around the town.
Thank you, Jason.
Yes.
Uh, I guess I'll read off, uh, the, uh, Parks and Rec Department's weekly updates. Uh, right now, their weekly programs they're running are before and after care. That goes Monday through Friday. They have their coffee social on Wednesdays. It's nine-thirty AM to twelve PM. Uh, track is, uh, Tuesday and, uh, uh, I think this is the last week of track, yes. Uh, thirty-seven children were in track this week. Five-thirty-one is our last track meet. They'll be at Old Orchard Beach with seven other towns. So if, uh, you're looking for a good time, that, that is definitely fun to watch those kids try their hardest. They, they do a really great job. Uh, T-ball, Wednesday nights, they have eleven children. There's a game with Hollis Team at Blake Memorial. Um, Music and Movement is also on Wednesdays at ten AM at the Old Town Hall. And Pickleball is going on Tuesdays and they have fourteen people for that. Uh, the Old Town use, uh, they got the scouts on Tuesday night and it's rented Sunday for an ATV safety class. Uh, programs, open registrations, there's none at this time, but that will be changing shortly. Uh, other, Moi Modoio opened on Saturday morning for the season and brought in three hundred and eighty dollars for the day and five hundred dollars on, on Sunday. Monday, they were, we closed early due to the rain. Uh, Carol's finished up, uh, paving on the court at Blake Memorial Field. Painting is scheduled for June seventeenth. Public Works has helped deliver and spread woodships around all the playground equipment. The generator grant was officially submitted, but there are some corrections to be made. Our director has emailed us the documents that we need, uh, to have an authorized representative of the town signing off. As of Friday, five-twenty-four, the Rec Department has brought in seventy-six thousand two hundred and seventy-seven dollars for the fiscal year so far. So already surpassing last year's end total of seventy-five thousand one hundred and fourteen dollars. This does not include the Old Town Hall rentals or the Moi Mo Beach, uh, revenues. And they're not finished collecting summer camp payments either. So good, good work in, in all departments. We really appreciate our director's efforts. Okay, with that said, I suppose we'll move into the informational bulletin. Tammy, would you mind leading us through that?
Okay. Um, the Select Board Office hours are Thursdays, two PM to eight PM. And the on-air meeting time is Thursdays at seven. Transfer station hours are Saturday and Sunday from nine to four, Wednesday noon to four. A transfer station sticker must be attached to your vehicle windshield for the disposal of all items. Uh, transfer station stickers are available to town office for twenty dollars. You do not need a sticker if you're using only the swap shop. We do not accept brush or yard clippings at the transfer station. The General Assistance Office, the applications are available anytime from the town clerk's office during their normal business hours. Applications must be filled out and accompanied with supporting documentation and must be signed. The Planning Board meets at the municipal complex, the first and third Monday evenings at seven PM. And as noted before, Parks and Rec Cards and Coffee is held at the Old Town Hall Building every Wednesday. I believe now it's nine-thirty to noon. So great turnout there. Come and meet the new folks and play games with them, have coffee, chat. Um, we see pictures this week of, um, um, let's see. I think it was, what are those? What's that game with all them little white squares with the dots on it? Dom- not?
Banana peel.
Hmm?
Banana peel.
Dominoes.
Dominoes, oh, Dominoes.
Dominoes, thank you. Yeah, yeah.
I call it chicken fingers.
So I've never learned how to play that, so I'm sorry. Probably Backgammon and some other games going on up there too. Um, but, you know, a little bit of rummy, you know? I'm, I'm all in for that. Anything else, no good. Uh, so that's it for the, um, updates for
Information.
What's going on here in the town.
Thank you, Tammy. We're going to open up the meeting to the public. I will say that we are going, at the end of the Select Board meeting, we will be entering into public hearing regarding, uh, several things that are coming up on the vote this year. Uh, does anyone, um, would, would anyone like to speak, uh, during this moment? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Um, just, just one second.
Yeah.
I'm going to be passing out, uh, handouts for everybody that gives you all the ordinance information on each ordinance. And, uh, the top one is just an overview, an explanation of each ordinance that's in depth here. So I'll be handing these out momentarily. Um, and this is all in preparation for the June eleventh voting here at the municipal complex. Um, polls open at eight AM and close at eight PM and that's coming right up because we're almost into June.
Mm-hmm.
Already.
Happens quick. Yeah, I think, uh, no. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Yep. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Select Board meeting is adjourned at seven-twenty. We will enter into the public hearing now.
Thank you. That's the overview?
This was post, this was posted in the, the paper.
Yes.
Do you start with the ATV bit or do we? Well, I don't know what, this is how it was listed in the paper.
All right.
I mean, it really doesn't, I mean, it, this is going to get technical. We could probably roll into the ATV first. I don't think it's going to take too much time.
All right.
It's up to you, I, whatever you want to do.
No, that sounds fine to me.
And the purchases.
Um, we'll probably have baseball parties, I think, in the office. It looks like.
John, you know? Could you, do you have one night?
Oh, wait, I, I see what she was doing. She wanted those there. Okay.
How do you want to know? Uh, ten, five, ten, six, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. It's in three, four, five. Uh, little baby, she's probably, well, she's not letting anybody here. You're welcome. Yeah. We can share, we can share.
Yeah.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you. There's one more. I'll get it. We need to share, we can share. Is that the flag? I don't know if I can get the shirt, um, that one, and then anybody else beyond. It doesn't seem to be. Oh, we don't actually. How we get that? So we're going to share. Oh, yeah. And I'll remember that you need some of that one. Oh, yes. Yeah. We need, we have, yeah, we need a lot more. Yeah. Um, we can share, like, the flag thing, do you need that there? Do you need the flag thing?
Did anybody not get a floodplain, I have an extra one, that's a picture of all the packets. Does anybody need a subdivision ordinance? They're making it right now.
Copy them off, keep up.
No, with how thick those packets are, they need quite a turnout.
Yeah, I wasn't anticipating. So we'll just talk and follow suit with how it's laid out.
Yep.
That's what they said, it's probably the easiest way.
Yep. Do you wanna lead us in that?
Yeah, that's fine.
Alright, great.
I think
I don't have a copy.
I think Joyce is here to talk about it.
Yeah?
Thank you. We're fine. Perfect, thank you. Is everyone else?
They're still working on, yeah, so if anybody needs any paperwork, let us know.
The, the office is working on, uh, getting some more copies, um, made out for anyone who doesn't have any. However, for the, the sake of time, I think we're going to, uh, mo- move forward with this public hearing.
Yeah, we weren't anticipating a, a big group to show up, so we apologize.
Well, we thank, we thank them also.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, so moving forward, as the town, as it was published in the paper, uh, the town of Livingston has, uh, we're entering into public hearings. We have three of them tonight. Um, one is reference to the Art Warren articles that are gonna be on, uh, the June eleventh vote. Uh, the public hearing on the proposed ATV access from the ATV club. And as well as the public hearing on the purchase or potential purchase of the academy, the gym academy from the Livingston Academy trustees. So, um, rolling right in, we'll start off with the, the articles. What I'm gonna do is I will read the overview and explanation of the articles as they're gonna be listed on the ballot. Um, and then we'll open the floor up to any questions. Uh, Joyce Foley, the planning board chair is here tonight and she can really dig deep and 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 answer any of the questions as they've put a lot of time and effort into into all these.
We should probably do that one at a time.
One, one, okay. Um, sure, we'll, we'll go one at a time on each article and if, uh, as we progress, if you have questions, we can answer them and if not, we'll move on to the next. So Article Two, as is on the ballot, shall amendments to the ordinance entitled zoning ordinance be enacted? So what this does is corrects typos and any incorrect references which basically were typos. Adds clarification information on the notice of decisions that the planning board issues once an application has been finally approved. On land use tables, it corrects that under medical marijuana production, the application has to be approved by the planning board and not the code enforcement officer. Uh, as it is a conditional use permit which the code enforcement officer cannot approve. And brings the ordinance into compliance with state law. That's what you're gonna hear a lot tonight is a lot of these are just bringing it, tightening it up and bringing it into what the state law already recommends. Um, do we have any questions or concerns, comments on Article Two?
Any questions, concerns, or comments for Article Two?
Anything that you would like to add to this, Joyce?
Nope.
Nope. Self, okay, good, good, well, we'll keep going. Article Three, gonna read, shall an amendment to the zoning ordinance entitled extraction industry be enacted? All the existing gravel pits that are currently in town will be grandfathered from these changes until they expand their operation or open a new pit. It does not have any impact on the smaller pits unless they expand significantly and have to comply with the main DEP requirements. Uh, this clarifies the reclamation standards when a pit is closed. Requires plans to be drawn by a licensed main professional engineer. Clarifies the language so everyone knows what's expected such as in buffer strips, lighting, and rehabilitation of the pits. Uh, requires location of seasonal high water tables using boring, borings or test pits. Requires a hydro, hydrological study for all new or expanding pits by having two monitoring wells for every ten acres. Determines the distance that must be maintained from wells residential water supplies. Prior to opening a new pit requires a performance guarantee acceptable to the select board. Increases liability insurance coverage necessary from one million to two million. And brings the ordinance into compliance with state law. Do we have any questions, comments, concerns on this? Do a, let, step right up there. No.
One article per time, we'll, we'll go through questions and then move on to the, to the next. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, I'm Lindsay Dearborn, um, representing Dearborn Construction, we're gravel pit owner in town. Um, I just, I haven't had a chance to read this, it wasn't posted, would like to go through it. I mean, I think some people here know the background that we've been kinda going back and forth on this for a couple of years. Um, can you start by explaining the, the bold, um, overview here that says this does not have any impact on smaller pits unless they expand significantly and have to comply with main DEP requirements? What's the threshold and I thought in all of this that you guys were more concerned with the smaller pits that weren't really going through all the regulations? But this kind of implies like the smaller guys get to not be a part of it?
No, I, I
Maybe it's just bad, bad wording, I'm not sure.
No, 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 I'll let Joyce speci- specifically.
Basically, basically, uh, pits that are five, that are under ten acres don't have to meet DEP requirements. Uh, most of the little town, they have smaller pits in town, they may be five acres, they might be four, they might be whatever. The reason for bolding it is just so that, um, there has been a lot of concern about what's in this, um, ordinance. And it really doesn't affect even any of the larger pits like Ms. Dearborn's or Murray's or whatever unless they expand or open a new pit. And we thought it was important to emphasize that. Um, smaller pits, if you, if they expand to the ten acre point, they have to go through DEP requirements and then obviously whatever's, if this is, is adopted, uh, they would have to comply with that. So that's basically all it's saying, nothing, there was no significance other than that to the bolding of it.
So this is kinda my problem in a nutshell with this whole process is that, um, I'm not trying to say anything against Joyce in particular, but that's inaccurate. It's not a ten acre threshold for when you have to be permitted through the DEP. Um, you can be less than an acre and need to be permitted through the DEP, you guys just don't know. I mean, you just don't know the rules and you're not versing it and I, I'm not trying to say, like I've said many times through this whole process, that I don't appreciate the effort through it, but you guys have really inaccurate stuff here and that's just not true. That's, that's not the way it works with the DEP, that's not the way it works with MSHA. You know, there's very strict requirements and you, you can't say it doesn't apply to the smaller pits. Um, there's other things in here that I've said, you know, before that they just don't work. Um, saying that natural buffers, you have to maintain natural buffers and and show them all. Everything is a natural buffer until it's disturbed. You guys crossed out the hundred foot and the fifty foot, you've gotta give a distance. Uh, you could say somebody's whole property is a natural buffer, it's naturally vegetated. You have to give a distance. You know, there's so many things wrong with this and it's supposed to, I, I'm, I'm actually shocked tonight that it's gonna be on the vote in, in two weeks because nothing's gone on with this since the planning board meeting in, I think, February. And now we're coming tonight, just getting a copy of it and being told it's gonna go to vote. So I, I, I just, I'd like
The planning board has been meeting and has been working on this continuously. I believe if, I, I mean, I was at personally at one of the meetings where they invited the pit owners to come and sit down with them. And, uh, they were supposed to be here for a, for, for a planning board meeting and then when I showed up, there was no pit owners that even showed to put their, their, their product or their info into this. So I mean, I've, I've, I've been able to, since I've, not even before I took office, I've been with the planning board going through this and listening to them and they put a lot of time into it. They did open it up to inviting the pit owners and 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 none of them, I mean, in defense of the planning board, none of them showed up. And, and I, this is, at the end of the day, the, the end result is it's a state, this, these are governed by the state and the DEP. So it's gonna fall under them regardless. We can't make less of a, or they can't make less of a law, they have to follow the DEP's state and guidelines. And it, and it states that multiple times in here, it's just bringing it in to state law.
So my, one of my problems, just kinda touching on what you just said, is, is the contradiction. So I get what you're saying that we, that we have to So I get what you're saying, that we, that we have to meet state guidelines. And that's sort of the problem with this whole thing, is we're so scrutinized, and, and there's so many people, and so many hoops and hurdles and regulations we need to go through. And then, on top of that, you guys are, or not you guys, but, you know, the initiative is putting forth more things, and it's a giant contradiction. But touching on the Planning Board meeting, I was at the meeting when we agreed to meet. And I got told a date, and then, nobody said it was the Planning Board meeting. So then, myself and Skip Murray reached out, wrote several emails, stopped by at Selectment meeting and said, hey, we're not comfortable with meeting at the Planning Board meeting. We thought this was a citizens initiative. We wanna sit down. We gave them options. We said, let's meet. It can be an open forum versus a Planning Board, this and that. And we got completely ghosted, completely ignored. Skip came here, I believe a Select Board member even tried to get ahold of the Planning Board and said, why are you not responding? You haven't replied to any emails from any of these gravel pit owners. They're trying to get ahold of you, get together, come up with a solution. And we got ignored. So, we didn't come to the Planning Board meeting because we expressed that we didn't feel comfortable doing that. It was a citizens initiative, but it was really coming from, you know, sort of the Planning Board, if you will. So we asked to do it in a different way and keep it as a citizens initiative. And we got completely 100% ignored. And I still feel like we've been ignored through this whole thing because I've even stood up here many times and said simple things, super simple things, that said, you can't say that an engineer's plan needs to be to a 60-foot scale. What if it's a 200-acre gravel pit? Just say, put it to an engineer's scale. Why are you crossing it out to 100-foot scale and saying, you have to make your plan to a 60-foot scale? Just simple things like that. And it's completely been ignored the whole time. And now we come here, and in like, two weeks, this is gonna go to vote. At an absolute minimum, we should get time to review this and come to the next meeting. And talk about it then. It's like, it's like everybody's talking for us as the experts, as the gravel pit owners. And I, it's, it's complete and utter frustration. We've been ignored. And then after you guys had your Planning Board meeting, we got one email.
I can't speak on that part, cuz I was not in office at that point in time.
So I just wanna let you know how that went down.
No, no.
It wasn't that we didn't show up because we were like, ooh, you know, we don't, we're gonna show them or something. It was that we were asking to please let us help you, please let us educate you, and got ignored by, and there were many people on that email chain. The Select Board put the email together.
Did, we got, you wanna respond?
Could you explain the difference between a citizens initiative and a Planning Board meeting? Because-
If I could speak to that for a minute, please.
Okay, go ahead, Joyce.
Can I just answer, cuz she's asking me? So, I'm only saying that because that's how it was presented at the last Selectment meeting. Not my words. Somebody else here said it was a citizens initiative. Meaning, it wasn't started or being done, in my mind, this is how I took it, by solely the Planning Board. It was done by Bonnie, other members of society. It wasn't that the Planning Board themselves were getting together and saying, let's do these changes. It was coming from citizens and asking the Planning Board to be a part of it. That's how I took it.
This has been a Planning Board initiative from the beginning. The Planning Board did ask Bonnie and Mary Lawrence, and their, I don't know if they had a, they did the most of the work. So the, it has been a Planning Board process from the beginning. I remember seeing an email that was sent, I believe by Ms. Dearborn, to the Selectman specifically saying they did not want to meet with Joyce. Sorry about that, but that's, you know, well, whoever. It came, we did not, as a board, receive any emails from, and we did not feel that we had to respond solely to the pit owners. They were given their opportunity to participate. They chose not to, for whatever their reasons. If they thought it was a citizens petition, that's their misunderstanding. But from the beginning, it has been a Planning Board referendum questions, if you look in the ordinance, are through the Planning Board. The Planning Board can ask for a subcommittee, such as Bonnie and Mary, to work with them, and they did a great deal of the work. They really did. They put a tremendous amount of effort into this. But to say that the pit owners were ignored is exaggerating. And to say that they have the best interest of the town, in which is what the Planning Board's responsibility is, is questionable, in my mind. They have objected to this from the beginning. They went to the previous board, Ms. Murray, and I believe, Mr. Murray, and I'm not sure if Ms. Dearborn was there or not, but I know Mr. Murray was, to one of the previous boards of Selectman, and specifically asked them not to put this forth for citizen review or citizen vote. And the previous board of Selectman agreed to do that, which personally, I felt was wrong. It's up to the citizens to determine whether an ordinance is to be passed or not. Towns have the right to impose their wishes through referendum questions. They can be stricter than state laws, but they cannot be less strict than state laws. I have spoken with several other code enforcement officers in surrounding towns, and most of these pits, the larger ones, are operating in towns that don't have any extraction ordinance, or very, very little extraction ordinances. And in one instance, one of the pit owners helped the town write the extractive ordinance. So I think that there are bound to be objections, of course. And I do admit that we were wrong. My statement was wrong in saying that you had to be five acres to go to the DEP, and I apologize for that. But as far as the content of this is concerned, it is definitely up to the town's citizens to determine if they wish the ordinance to be at least in compliance with the state or stricter than the state. And from what the work that was done, and from the discussion, from the public hearings, this was what, this ordinance is what we, the Planning Board, came up with to put forth. And I don't feel that it is putting any undue hardship on anyone. If you were to look at the extraction ordinance in Standish, as an example, they are much stricter than we are. But you'll also find that probably some of these pit owners don't have pits there. So, you know, guys, we're looking to protect what is in the best interests of Leamington, and particularly, as far as our water supply is concerned, as far as the layout of the plan is concerned. If an engineer were to come before the board because of the size of their pit, and we, and they said, look, this is a more reasonable delineation, we certainly would grant the waiver. People can always ask for a waiver, where usually reasonably lenient in granting those waivers. So from our perspective, this is what we, the Planning Board, believe is probably, in the long term, best interest of the town. And I doubt that it's that inconvenient for most of the pit owners to comply with it.
Thank you, Joyce. State your name for the, sorry.
Bonnie Lord-Lottlin. I am one of the people who was asked by the Planning Board to contribute to making some suggestions for language that would help reflect the desirable updates to our extractive industry ordinance. That was done, just if anyone wants to go back and see if it really happened or not, on December 7th, 2020, over three years now, at a Planning Board meeting, I'm pretty sure. So if the video of that is available, people can see that I and some other people were asked that night to do just what I said. And it really, and so over the years, we've contributed some language. And we didn't know anything about all of this, but we were people who were used to doing research and were, we wanted to help. And it was, I think, very reasonable of the town to ask interested people to do some of that work. So what did we do? We talked the DEP, and we went online and looked at the DEP performance standards. Title 38, statute 490-d. This was our education. And Lindsay, it must be said at this point, and all the other folks who are gravel pit owners and operators, we respect you. We know this is a very, very big business. And you, of all, you know the DEP requirements. What this ordinance update does, to a huge degree, is just what Jason's been saying, just what Joyce has been saying so articulately tonight. It reflects the DEP standards, which operate anyway for you all and all the other pit owners. This we've learned, and you know that. You know, for instance, Lindsay, that it is a DEP standard that natural buffers, which you mentioned a minute ago, must be at least 50 feet from property lines and private roads, and at least 100 feet from public roads. It's a DEP requirement. As Jason says, it's a state law. We didn't make this up. But we do feel it respects the citizens of this town, the taxpayers, to have an ordinance that shows that we know what the state laws are. And we represent, we represent those. And I could go through many other things that are now in the proposed ordinance that are simply language from the DEP, which exists whether we even have an ordinance or not. You know that the DEP comes in and inspects the pits every three years. So part of what we're trying to do is say, well, what happens in the three years in between? The pits should also be operating according to the DEP standards. And the pits that are doing everything right would welcome that, in my opinion. So, that's a little bit of my perspective. But I just wanna also say that my contribution and other people who worked on this came about because we were concerned citizens who attended public hearings a lot like this. And came out when there was, you know, something we were interested in. And after a few of those, we were tapped to see if we'd contribute. And that we did. However, the resulting document was a compilation of what we did, but also what the Planning Board decided on, voted, and also what the town attorney voted. So really, it's a bit of an integration there, of just whose contribution was whose. But ultimately, it was the town attorney who's really authorized this for the town, in addition to the Planning Board. And I think the Planning Board knew what we'd done to offer because we did the research with the DEP. And the DEP regulates you folks anyway. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. Any, any more, yes? Thank you.
My name's Darren Shaw. I'm with Gorm Sand and Gravel. We don't have a pit in town, but I'd like to someday. So there's just a couple of things that I'd like to point out on this stuff. We have a very large pit in Sanford. I think I brought this up at the last meeting, which would have been, I think, fall of last year. Is a liability for the towns and a liability for the pit owners. So, when a permit is issued by the Planning Board, a permit can't be revoked in term, in the way, in the traditional sense where you pull the permit away from it. In 2018, in the city of Sanford, they had done five-year renewals. And the town manager pulled the permit of an operator, and they sued the town of Sanford, and they won. So my biggest fear with these, and that's kind of why I'm here today, is to prevent liability being placed on the town of Leamington with some of these, some of these wording, like Lindsay was saying. So, everything for the notice in the enforcement catalog, it looks good until you get down to, a lot of the wording in the last paragraph is very iffy, I would say, in terms of liability for the town of Leamington, is kind of what I'm saying. "Any operation shall be deemed closed 90 days after its permit expires." Permits don't expire. Or in the event of non-compliance, you can shut them down for non-compliance, but you can't pull their permit. Is essentially the only thing I'm concerned of with this. So you can shut them down and cease their operation, but you can never pull their permit. And then I have a couple of questions. There's a section in here, "Noise Levels Shall Comply With Section 11-J of This Ordinance", but I don't see an 11-J in here. Can somebody tell me what 11-J is?
11-J is in the zoning ordinance.
The zoning ordinance, okay. I didn't, I didn't read that one. That's my fault.
This is part of the zoning ordinance.
Okay. All right, got it. And then, just to kind of reiterate what Lindsay said, some of this wording is very, it's just iffy. We would really like to be involved with this process. We really would. I have to agree with Lindsay. I've also been on these emails. And we got a date, and we got no other invitation. I don't really have a dog in this fight, but I wanna help. You know what I mean? Just to be fair for everybody, I submitted Maine aggregates, standard ordinance that they do for pits and quarries for towns. I see some cherry pick stuff in here. I'm not sure if anybody read it. But that's a very, that's a much fairer ordinance, I think. It was collaborated between pit owners and state officials and citizens initiatives involved with the entire state. Guess that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Joyce, go ahead.
To say that this language opens the town to liability, I would question that because this has been gone over by the town attorney. And he has changed some of our wording to ensure that the town isn't adversely affected by this. It's the DEP that basically, I know the municipal organization or whatever it was that you quoted is easier, and I'm sure that the pit owners would rather see that kind of language in the ordinance. But that's not the decision of the board that we felt that was in the best interest of the town. So we took, there's no, I should've read this before I came here tonight, but I don't believe there's anything in here that says that a license will be taken away. If it had, the town attorney probably would've picked up on it. The language, we stand by the language. If the attorney said that it was in the best interest of the town, then the Planning Board takes, and it wasn't the MMA attorney, it was the town attorney who went through this. And as to address the point of being invited, when a public hearing is held, which is properly advertised, everyone is invited. We do not send out personal invitations to people, to corporations, to whoever. If you are interested in a subject matter or anything that the Planning Board is doing, and you see the ad in the paper, then that means everybody. It doesn't mean that we have to invite specific people. It's not our intent to do that, and will not be our intent to do that. We are there for the townspeople, not for specific organizations or companies.
Thank you, Joyce.
Thank you, Joyce.
Go ahead, Lindsay.
I'd just like to make a final statement that, you know, touching on what Joyce says, they're not there to make personal invitations, but we asked, we offered. This has been a long process. And really, I kind of feel like we were shunned, for lack of a better term. And I've asked, you know, if things are posted on the website before. I know that maybe there's laws, and the town attorney can weigh in on that. But if you're putting in the paper, that's fine. I know Tammy's tried to get them to update the website. But even coming here tonight, you couldn't get the agenda. I, I can't get a copy of the agenda right now. You know, getting this tonight and getting to review it, I don't think that's fair to anybody. I don't think that's fair to any taxpayer in this town. It feels, I don't know, this isn't a good word to use, but it almost feels a little secretive. And then we get to find out about it later. I know public hearings are public hearings, but then, you know, Bonnie's being asked by the Planning Board, and that's great that she wants to be involved in the town. Kudos to her. But like, she's being asked as a private citizen who's not elected to any board to help, you know, make changes because she just likes to be involved, that's great. But, like we said before, maybe reach out to some experts. Cuz this language isn't right, and it does open you up to liability. So I'd just like to make sure everyone in the town realizes that.
I would like to mention real, real quickly that the Select Board has brought up these very articles in the last three or four Select Board meetings we've had.
Yeah, I've had the, I've had the bullet points posted, posted online. I've had, I've mentioned these in-
I've had, I've mentioned these in the last, yeah, probably last month or a month and a half of our meetings. The planning board has had their public hearing on this. There's been ample of time to, for anybody to show up. I'm not sure.
This is, I was told this was the very first time.
This is the final.
No, no, this, may I say, this has been a matter of public record ever since the last planning board hearing. So anyone who wanted to come in and see it, Patty and Bev have had it out front for, what, two months now, three, I don't know how long it's, because we have to have the language to Patty. I think it was January something, the first or second week in January, that she had to have the wording for the warrant. So it's been part of January, February, March, April, May. Anyone who's wanted it badly enough could have gotten to see it. And I will reiterate, this language is not iffy. It is specific. It addresses issues that, in, in fact, one of the reasons that some of the information is in here is because when an applicant comes to the town, it makes it very clear so that they don't have to go to the state law and read the state law themselves. They know what they have to do. They can deal with Craig in this office here. Craig has the language, et cetera. You cannot expect anyone, I don't think, to have to go to the state law to see what their requirements are when, in fact, the towns have a code enforcement officer, they have an ordinance, they have a zoning ordinance book that's always available to anyone at any time. So people have ample opportunity, and this just makes it very clear what is expected of them. So when they start to go through the process, they understand it and they can follow it, and it's not coming in and getting rejected and then having to go back and do it over again. So it's really a pretty simple process. But I will reiterate, this is not illegal, weak language. This is language that has been approved by the town attorney for the town.
I'm just going to say one more thing. Unless somebody has a question, more or less I'll sit down. But.
The, the last time I tried to get information, which was after the planning board meeting a couple of weeks later, I got told through the selectman office that I, they didn't have that information. If I wanted that information, I needed to call Joyce's personal cell phone. And I said, I don't think that's a good idea. So we'll try and see if we can get ahold of Stan through selectman email. That was the process I was told a couple of weeks after the planning board meeting. Some of what's being expressed here tonight is just not accurate. I don't know the ins and outs of how everybody communicates here, but this stuff isn't okay and doesn't happen in the other towns that we deal with. Like, you should be able to call the selectboard office and get the information or go online and get the information. I shouldn't be told when really Joyce doesn't agree with our, our point of view, call Joyce's cell phone. That's just not okay.
I, I'm not sure. Who told you that?
It was the selectman secretary at the time. I couldn't tell you who it was, but that's exactly, that's exactly what happened.
Which I don't believe she was, she no longer, right.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
But that's just not okay.
No, no, you should have come right down to the office and, and asked.
But I'm, I'm busy. I don't, you know, I called, and that's what I got told. So then we wrote emails. But I don't, I can't just drop what I'm doing and stop. I made a phone call, and I got told, well, we don't have that information. You need to call Joyce's cell phone. That's not normal.
Well.
Donna, Donna, one moment. I believe Bonnie had her hand up first.
Bonnie Lord Loughlin again. I think all of us, our own particular stories with some of the difficulties we run into are valid. And Lindsay, it sounds like you've had yours. At the same time, I'm starting to hear that, I'm starting to hear sort of complaints on a few levels that are taking away from the big picture here, in my opinion. You know, we come forward in our town frequently to make suggestions to a select board that really pretty much receives them fairly openly and well. I can say that I see Elisa here in the audience, if you don't mind my saying, who came forward with a great suggestion a few months ago, and I believe it's being implemented now. And Laura, who had a great suggestion about a month ago. And so some of us really come forward. And we know, we do not live in a realm of perfect administrative workings here, or probably perfect administrative workings in any of our jobs. But the more I'm hearing about your complaints tonight, Lindsay, they're kind of taking away from what we're all looking at, which is an enormously improved extractive industry ordinance in our town that hasn't had one in a long time. And this doesn't mean that it won't be improved another time. I have to say that, you know, I haven't been personally invited to any public hearings, I don't think. I've come forward, and I, I've sort of thought that the last two or three or maybe four, that I would see people from the industry there. And I've been surprised that I didn't because many times in the past, you have been there. And really, your silence sort of made me think they're okay with this now because what they see in it is a lot of language right from the DEP, which is good because the DEP regulates you all anyway, and you know that.
Thank you, Bonnie. Don, sorry. No, you're good.
Donna Sawyer, Shaving Hill Road, Leamington. I am the secretary to the planning board. Nothing is secret that goes on in planning. The agendas are posted on the website. The notices, when I send out a butters letters, those are on the website. We meet twice a month, the first Monday and the second Monday of the month. Excuse me, first and third. And those minutes are online. I'm working on a project right now that looks to be, I haven't got it up to date yet, but six times the planning board has met to just talk about gravel pits. We never try to do anything secret. I saw a copy of an email that Ms. Dearborn sent. And I believe that email, the person who answered that call was a part-time person, very new to the town. And the answer was maybe, you know, I don't know anything about it. That person doesn't know anything about it. I have a phone in my office. I will take any phone call. Anybody wants to call me. I think that Joyce and I bend over backwards just to get input. And I don't, if, I think if the gravel people should take a little of initiative, don't wait to be invited. You're all invited at any point. This is all I've got to say. Thank you.
Go ahead.
So I don't think that the planning board is being secretive at all. There's 482 towns in the state of Maine, and Maine Aggregates is trying to cover all of them. I mean, we can't be just focused on one town. There are multiple towns that are trying to pass gravel extraction ordinances. I went to Harrison on Tuesday. I went to Sanford last Thursday. I went to Alfred the Tuesday before that. It's just, it's very hard when you don't hear from a planning board. It just feels disingenuous. Is the only thing I'll have to say about that.
Sure.
My cellphone is never given out to anyone except friends and family. So you couldn't get me my cellphone if you wanted to. But all of our, all planning board members have their telephone numbers are available either online or in the town warrant. So you can reach us at any time.
Okay. Any more on the extraction ordinance? No? Okay. We will move on to Article Four. Article Four reads, "Shall an amendment to the subdivision ordinance entitled 'Fire Protection and Public Safety' be enacted? Clarifies the distance needed between buildings and the water supply. Eliminates contradictory, contradiction within the ordinance. Clarifies ordinance language as to meaning of certain procedures and further protects the town from liability. Cisterns and how they are to be constructed more clearly defined. There is a much-needed, this is much-needed due to significant problems with developers. Ensures proper inspection by fire chief and code enforcement officer before final approval and defines responsibility of maintenance and of cisterns and dry hydrants by the homeowners association." Do we have anybody that wishes to speak, ask questions on this ordinance? No?
Any questions or concerns for Article Four?
Okay. Well, move on.
Moving on.
Article Five, "Shall an amendment to the zoning ordinance entitled Flood Plane Management be enacted?" This is FEMA mandates towns to adopt this ordinance. Towns must adopt by July 17, 2024. If no, if not adopted, no FEMA insurance policies will be issued in the town. Existing policies will still be in effect, but will not be renewed upon expiration. No FEMA money for the town should they be, should they apply for reimbursement from storm or road damage. There are currently six families in town with FEMA policies, and this could affect future sales of homes in town. Once again, this, this flood plane management is, it's, it has to be passed. It's a, it's a federal mandate, it's a mandated law. And it will hurt the people that are in the flood zone. And/or if we have a bad rainstorm or something, it takes out a bridge, road, culverts, we may not get reimbursed, and it's going to go on the taxpayers' dime to get them fixed. So it's, there's, there's no ill benefits to the town for this not passing. So do we have any questions, concerns, comments on Article Five?
Sue Lloyd, Moody Road. Does this change zoning for flood planes at all?
The, the new zoning maps are coming out, and they'll be released on July 17. I sat in with one of the FEMA representatives, and FEMA technology has come a long ways. So what used to be a 10-foot zone is now they've narrowed down to within a foot. So somebody that may have been in flood zone may come out of flood zone with the new maps. But it really doesn't change any of the, the layout, per se.
Okay. So FEMA does the maps, and they're doing it in July?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Article Five? Article Five?
Yes. No? Okay. Article Six, "Shall an amendment to the zoning ordinance entitled LD 2003 be enacted?" This is a state mandated law. Towns must adopt by mid-July. Leamington, it won't be seriously affected as we do not have public water or sewer. Allows up to three dwellings units per lot. This could be the original house with an accessory building, like an in-law apartment, and another house. If you're adding another house, the lot size required in your zona district would have to double. So for example, if you're in the, the outer skirts and it's three acres for your lot size minimum, you would have to have at least six acres to put the second house on. And you could still add the in-law apartment, but you couldn't have the second dwelling, separate dwelling, without having a double lot. So anything over six acres, you wouldn't have a problem with. This, if adding a house, okay, so, but there is no requirement for the separate frontage or another driveway and no requirement for additional parking spaces. So if you own 10 to 15 acres, you would not have to double that, obviously. This, you would still have to meet the setback requirements, and tiny homes are allowed. So is there any questions, concerns, comments on this?
I believe Dennis had his hand up first.
I hope I'm on the right one and didn't miss it. Dennis, Derry-Goshen Farm Road. I had a question about the definition of tiny homes. Am I on the right one here? So it's, it's not the same as the state definition. So listing it as tiny homes, I, I don't have any problem with what it says, but it's in conflict with what the state definition of a tiny home is, and they're both called tiny homes. And I don't know if that's been looked at, if somebody can explain that. But it seems to be like it could set us up for appeals board or litigation. And I'm just curious if the, the reasoning behind that. I'm, I don't have a tiny home. I don't have a plan on it. My, my house is pretty small, but it's not a tiny home. I am familiar with them, and they, you know, the structure, state law says it's to build on a frame or chassis. And the definition of Leamington is, says, you know, it has to be on a foundation or crosswall. So there's conflict in what you could be called a tiny home in the town of Leamington. I'm just wondering if that was looked at.
Yes. I'm going to let Joyce, I understand this some, but I'll let Joyce reiterate for you, so.
We got our language from Southern Maine Regional Planning Council. And so at the time, when JD came to speak with us, he did say that language was evolving somewhat. But what we have here for tiny homes is, it means a living space permanently constructed on a full foundation of frost wall and designed for use as a permanent living quarters or as an accessory structure subject to all applicable land use requirements. A single-family dwelling or as an accessory structure that A complies with the main uniform building energy code standards for construction, B does not exceed 400 square feet in size, and C, tiny homes do not have wheels and do not include a trailer, semi-trailer, camp trailer, recreational vehicle, or manufacturing housing. So Dennis, the last we knew from Southern Maine Regional, that was what the state. But you say there's more updated language?
I looked it up. I can't pull it up right now, but I think it's even written in. You can hear me. What I saw, I think, was defined in state law in 2020 or something like that.
Yeah, it's changed since.
So maybe, but it, because tiny homes, sort of by definition, come on chassis and wheels, and that's how you get them to your location. I realize that they can be taken off that and put in on a foundation. But that's not the way that Leamington kind of says it. It can't be built on that, and it just seems like there's a conflict there. And I, I don't know, in fact.
I think, yeah, I think to answer that, and in sitting, and correct me if I'm wrong, Joyce, the, the, the main purpose is, we have, here we are with the state statute or the state law, and then the town can kind of constrict it a little bit and make it more. Basically, you don't want campers popping up on everybody's front lawn. So by requiring a foundation or a, or a platform for these to sit on, and when you haul in a mobile home, you got to pull the axles out anyways. So to say a mobile home has to be on a slab, that's kind of where it, where it is. It's not really contradicting. You're only allowed 120 days in a camper on your parcel of land, and you're allowed 180 days on your parcel of land in a mo, in a camper that's hooked to water and sewer. You cannot physically stay any more than 180 days. You have to remove it. So by taking the camp, because that, here you are, you would have everything a tiny home has in that situation. So you would have to remove the tiny home if you left the wheels. And so they've gone, I think, a little bit step above and beyond and just to try to protect Leamington and, and we're not driving around looking at virtual campers sitting on everybody's lot. Am I?
One other point is too, I think we were told, you correct me if I'm wrong, that if it's not on a slab or a foundation type of thing, that the town can't tax it as, for taxable income. But I could be corrected. But I'm pretty sure someone, I think it was JD who told us that as well.
Correct.
My niece would be glad to hear that. Although she was in Springville, because she got taxed while I'm standing on the headwheels and it's still. State, state law says, and I'll just read it for you, this is why it came up. I don't have a concern on this. ADC, Section, I missed it, ADC, Section 29A, says a tiny home means a living space permanently constructed on a frame or chassis and designed for use as a permanent living structure. So.
Designed and used for a permanent living.
Right.
Yeah. So I mean, it can be built on the chassis. Yeah, so, I mean, it can be built on the chassis.
Well, not according to Limington.
It can be hauled in.
It can be brought in and put on a foundation.
Yeah, it said it must be on a foundation or a frost wall. It doesn't state in there that it has to, that it can't come in on wheels, cause then it would, you know, you see what I'm saying? So, it's, it's not defining...
I understand the intent.
Yeah.
My, my point was, it just seems like there's a conflict between state. If we call that a small house, or anything but a tiny home, I, I think it would not be an issue, but I just think if you, if it defines, if the state defines tiny home is one thing, and our definition doesn't define it that way, we're just setting ourselves up for an issue. That's, that was my concern, that's all.
I believe, I'll let Joyce rebut this, but I believe we, or they have come up with the, the language that kind of constricts it more. So, it's not less than the state statute, it's more than the state statute. So, where they state says you can have wheels, technically you can roll this in, but the town of Limington and the planning board has come up and proposed that those are removed, and it's sitting on a foundation and/or a, 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 a platform. Anybody else?
Bonnie?
Bonnie?
Thank you, Bonnie Lord-Loughlin. Could, uh, the second bullet underneath this article to help explain it, I'm confused about it, is Limington not, uh, it says Limington not seriously affected as we do not have public water or sewage. Is that tied into what you were explaining to Dennis about disconnecting when you pulled it away from its water source?
No.
What is that to do with?
Public water and sewer, the, the LD two thousand three act is to give affordable housing. It's not super affordable out here in Limington if you gotta put a ten thousand dollar leach field and a, you know, a, a ten, fifteen thousand dollar well in, whereas, and you get into, in towns where there's water, standish, it's a lot cheaper, you can pay a forty dollar water bill and a, and a sewer bill. So, that's why it doesn't adversely affect, because it's not as easy out here in the, in the, the, the town area.
I think Bonnie's specifically referring to the part where a tiny, you know, like a camper has to be hooked up to water and sewer.
No, I don't...
May I respond?
Sure, absolutely, Joyce.
Basically, if you are in a town with sewer, and public sewer and public water, you have a much higher density that's required, and because we don't have public sewer or public water, we have septic tanks, et cetera, the density on your lot is, in, in other words, there were people who came to us that were concerned that this was going to vastly increase in the population, and what it would do to our taxes, et cetera, et cetera. And it's true that maybe in some towns that do have the sewage and the water, because they can put more on their properties, it might affect them, but here, because we don't have it, the density on the lots are, you know, are, are not as highly impacted, is basically what it is.
Anybody else on LD two thousand three? No? Okay, I would say that wraps up the...
First public hearing.
The public hearing on the ordinances that are being voted on June eleventh. Once again, if you have any more concerns, comments, questions, you gladly can stop into the Select Board office and/or she out front, and you can get a copy of these, or anybody else that may wanna copy. Okay, let's move on to the next order. The next is the public hearing on the ATV, proposed ATV access. The ATV club locally would like to utilize a small section of Axelson out here, and some of Moody Road, I believe.
Boothby.
Boothby, Boothby Road, sorry, I apologize. I'm gonna let, I'm gonna assume you're Lindsey?
I am.
Okay. I'm gonna let Lindsey read her proposal.
I'm Lindsey Kennedy, the treasurer of the Limington Wheelers ATV Club. We are requesting access, that the town in Limington consider granting ATV access route on the Axelson and Boothby Road. By allowing an access route, the full length of Axelson Road, it will allow the riders to exit the trailhead on Axelson and turn right to connect to our trailhead at the ballfields. It will also allow riders to exit the trailhead and turn left to go down to Boothby Road. By then allowing access, the short distance on Boothby Road, it would allow riders access to the trailhead across from Derrick Drive. That would then allow riders to connect back to the Hollis Trail system and vice versa. With this connection being broken at this time, businesses in Limington have felt the impact during the riding season. By allowing an access route, it would create safer traveling conditions for all involved. ATVs would have a speed limit to follow and be required to stay on the pavement, which would also help preserve the conditions of the ditches and the roads. The Limington Wheelers appreciates any consideration of the above-mentioned access routes, and we can also provide you a current map for reference and highlight the access routes if you can.
Yes, thank you, Lindsey, you have the, uh, the maps, and we didn't have a printed, but what happened is, a landowner had shut off the trailhead here, what they used to go down Axelson, and then up, uh...
Pine Hill.
Pine Hill Road, and so, that's been shut down. All they would be required now is to come down Boothby, to hit the trailhead, to continue through onto, uh, Buckston-Hollis areas. In speaking with them myself, they've done all the, the legwork, all the signage, everything is gonna be put up. It's all working with the, the main inland fisheries and the warden service, so they've done their, they've done their diligence here. It's here for us to vote tonight. Do you Select Board have any questions on this matter?
I do not.
No? Is there anybody out here in the audience, public, would like to speak on this? Go right ahead.
Lacey Hoskins Norton Road, I am the chair of the Limington Comprehensive Plan Committee. We've been working over the past year to update the town's comprehensive plan. We've met with a lot of different people in town, including the ATV club. We're probably about seventy-five percent done with our draft plan, so it is not published yet, it's not public yet, but what I did wanna share is that allowing access to these roads is consistent with what we already have drafted in our plan as part of our recreation section. I think this is also really consistent with some of the feedback that we got with the survey that hopefully a lot of you completed a couple of months ago. So, I just wanted to, to share that feedback from the committee's perspective, and also from the feedback that we got from the town from our survey, that we fully support them having this road access.
Thank you. Any, Joyce?
If I could ask, as you know, there's a trail on, on the backside of, of my property, and the reason it's closed down is because of the damage that was done in the storm. I have called both the snowmobile group and, and your group to say that the trail is closed for the season, or, or for, for the year, in hopes that with the logging, et cetera, that's going on, it will be cleared. I was asked, and, and I'm, I may be typical of, of other landowners, I don't know, but I was asked if someone could, from the club, could come in and, and with chainsaws and cut, and from a liability point of view, I just could not do that. So, I don't know if it's, how much it will affect what you want to use on main roads, but I hope by next year to have the trail back open to you guys. It's just, it's a mess, it's just a total mess.
Thank you, Joyce. Anybody else have any, step, sure, step right up.
I do, I do. Let's go to that. Hi, my name is Linda Harmon, I live on the Boothby Road. I do not know if the ATVs that go by, or the side-by-sides, are in your group, but they go way too fast on the road, they gotta be doing at least fifty. I have my two grandkids, Monday through Friday, every day, and you got these guys going up and down the road, in the middle of the road, not on the side of the road, not in the ditch. They go by, they've got cars behind them that are following them, and you're supposed to pull over and let them go, that don't happen. We have them going down the middle of the road, racing, side by side. What's up? Why?
Right, um, talking with them, the, the, the kind of, what I'm gonna call bonus to this passing, or allowing this to happen, one is gonna be signage. There's gonna be signs at the trailheads, entrance, exit, on the roads advising that, I believe it's gonna be a fifteen mile an hour, so it's gonna be allowed to be policed now, ma, meaning if somebody breaks the law, they're in the middle of the road, they're doing thirty, fifty, they're gonna get summoned point blank. This is, this is more of, more of a protection for the, for the people as well, because it, they're gonna, I believe they're gonna require to be on the edge of the asphalt. The reason not in the ditch is because over continued use, we're gonna have to put money into the ditch, and I don't think that's town, the town people don't wanna do that, and, and so, maintaining a fifteen mile an hour, and, and then it allows the warden service and the, the state police to really crack down on the ones that are not abiding by these, these laws.
Is there going to be, like, a time that they shut down? I mean, I'm hearing, hearing them at one o'clock in the morning.
Yeah, absolutely, step right up there, Tabby.
Tabby Emery, I'm the secretary for the club. So, we have zero tolerance as well, being the club, nothing pains me more than the bad apples, because they give our club a bad name, for sure. So, we don't stand for it either, and, and we always recommend everybody who sees anyone, you know, out on, that's, do anything like that, contact the warden. They are absolutely, like, every time we've had any issues, especially my side of town, the potato fields, they were having some issues over there, the warden has been over there countless times already this year, and it's made a big difference. And he encourages, you know, he is, that's what he's there for, so absolutely call him every time. They'll get, they'll get everybody out there, you know, but this is what we're trying to prevent. My, so, my, what, what I think happens is, because we don't have the access route, then people are trying to, some of the people, are trying to scoot through as fast as they can, so they don't get caught, and some are just being ignorant. So, with, with the, with them having the access route, you know, I'm hoping that it will slow them down, because they don't have the fear of getting caught, but that's, that's what, that's our hope anyway, but absolutely, contact the warden, because we have zero tolerance for it too, and we will call them out on it, and it, it makes us look bad, and that's not what we want for our town, so. We apologize on behalf of them, you know, I don't, I don't want that in with anybody.
I don't begrudge anybody riding them, but if you're gonna do it, play by the laws.
Exactly.
Play by the book, you know, behave yourselves, do what you're supposed to do, you wanna mess around, go elsewhere.
Absolutely.
Where it's safe, you know? I have grandkids, like I said, that are there every day of the week. What if?
Yes. I have grandkids too, I, I, I side with you, I do. And I think that the posted speed limit, what, you know, speaking with them, I think it's a, I, I think it's a better option, because now, not like she said, the ones maybe that are breaking the law won't be so apt to, especially, you've got signs there saying, you know, this, and, and, and they're pretty strict, the, the regulations, they have to follow with their signage, so...
When would all this take place? After it gets voted on, the putting the signs up?
Yes.
So, that wouldn't take place until after June eleventh?
No, no, if we, we vote tonight, and if we vote it, she could put signs up tomorrow.
So, then, and that is our plan.
You got my vote, go for it.
Is there anybody else here that has questions or comments, concerns about the, the ATV? Sure, whoops.
I just had a... Sue Lord Moody Road, I just had a quick question, what is the, the entry point on Boothby? So, it, would it go from, like, Beaverberry up to Derrick? Is that...
No, I, actually, I can bring this over to you.
Derrick is the trailhead, and then, so it should go down in behind all that, out to Beaverberry.
So, the current, the current trail that got shut off is here, so it's only, it's a short, that's short, it's not going all the way down here, the trail is right there, so it's just, it's coming from the intersection down to the trailhead.
Okay. Okay, I was just curious, thank you.
Can you save Jason that, Jason?
I'm sorry?
Are you on the microphone?
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, yes.
Just go down Axelson Road and tell us where you have it.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't know if this map...
Well, help?
Yeah, no, absolutely, I'm just looking to see if this actually had a, a footage.
One of our plant, we're updating our map, it's on the list. So, if you, so if you're sitting at the end of Axelson Road, you would just take a right to go down Boothby just until across from Derrick Lane or the sod field. There's a trailhead right there that you duck down into, so it would only be that section.
Really? How, if you had to gas-footed drive?
Oh, it's, um, in our original, we had it half a mile, I wanna say it was half a mile, yeah.
Okay, so...
I think all, overall, Axelson included, it was about a mile and a half.
Okay. Emon?
I just wanna point out, the, the benefit of the board voting on this is that you can revoke it at any time too, so, they put the signage up, and hopefully it does its job, but over time, if it's, if it's not working out, you have the ability to revoke that instead of having to wait for, you know, citizens to come in and, and force another vote at a, you know, at an election or whatever, so.
Gotcha.
That, that's a good, good thing, I guess. The other thing is, you mentioned voting on it tonight, but I don't think you can because you adjourned your meeting, so. You'd have to wait till your next.
No, we, we can according to MMA, in the public hearing.
Even though you adjourned?
Yeah.
Cause the public hearing isn't a meeting, but...
Any more questions, or? Sure.
Laura Sullivan, I'm just gonna add this comment and a personal opinion. I think it's great if we get this to go through for you guys, cause much to your point, it's usually not the people trying to abide by the rules. Now, I live at the other end of Limington, where it goes, you know, Limington, Waterboro, Limington, and the Shell Stow, now the Noria Station, during the summertime has endless side-by-sides, and I can tell you, those people are not residents, they are not in the district, they are the people that come from the, I won't say cities, cause we don't have, like, huge cities, but they come from away, they come from the Bitterford, they come from Saco, they come from Portland, because we're the country. So, I would hate to see the frustrations that we go through as townspeople seeing that, not let the good intentions pass, because I'm on the other end of it where it's insane down there, cause I'm by hardscrabble, and they go across one seventeen right in front of you, most of them are pretty good, but, and that going down the road at fifty, that's a lot of ignorance, because it's not just trying, yes, I agree, they're trying to make it quick, but they're in the free open road that they don't get in the city, so they're trying to just do, you know, have that rush, if you will, and they don't know where they're going, so, I think it's a great thing you guys are putting this together, but hopefully it'll pass, and we won't judge what you're trying to do by the people who are coming to our town, or going through our, using our town, that really don't play by the rules.
Understood. Thank you, Laura. Anybody else here have any questions, comments? What, uh...
Shall we?
Yes, it's, it's, it's up to you.
Yeah.
Tammy, any concerns, questions, comments, anything? No?
Then, with that said, I will make a motion to allow ATV access on Axelson Road and Boothby Road up to the trailhead across the road from Derrick Drive.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Okay?
Motion carries. ATV now has access to Axelson Road and Boothby, to the trailhead across the road from Derrick Drive.
And I will be the first one that will complain, Tammy.
You gotta see Tammy. Okay. With that said, thank you ATV Club, thank you Tabby, Lindsey.
Thank you.
Um, the last, last thing on the agenda here, um, uh, public hearing on the purchase of the Limington Academy gym from the Limington trustees. Let me start with this one. Um, the literature, the literature that's currently on the ballot is incorrect. We, the townspeople, wanna put it out to the rest of the townspeople to purchase this, but in the literature, it states that it would be nine payments of five thousand dollars. And unfortunately, it's supposed to be five payments of nine thousand dollars. So at this present time, I think we as the board have come up unanimously to, to tell the public to vote this down. We will circle back with this in the November ballot, we'll get it on the ballot with the correct literature. We still, I mean, we, the board are very interested, and I think it's a great thing for the, for the people of the town, and I would love to open it up to the floor if anybody has any questions, comments, concerns about purchasing the gym. Um, they came to us with a proposal for, to purchase the, the academy for forty-five thousand dollars.
Purchase the gym, not the academy.
Sorry, the gym, for forty-five thousand dollars. Um, it would be a great addition to the town, I believe. You know, the parking lot, it, it would serve every, the surrounding library, the old town hall. Um, there's a lot of bonuses to it, so I would like to open it up to anybody that has any cus- concerns, comments. Anybody wants to talk about it? Do you have one in the back?
Chris Small, Dulles Ridge. In looking at the building, have we done any background on this? Cause I know at one point it had a water issue, which shut it down. Um, I'm just wondering why we would take on another project building that, when we haven't finished the project building we have going and add a, added tax burden to the townspeople. I'm, I'm not sure what the, the desired use of, other than from the sounds of it, parking, but you have a building there that's gonna have to be taken care of whether you do parking or not, cause I'm pretty sure you won't get away with tearing it down. I'm pretty sure that would be held by historical society or whatever and not be allowed. Um, and in, in looking at what I looked at today, uh, looks like it needs a lot of work to be able to be used as a public use. Uh, even the gym side, uh, there's no emergency lighting that I could see through windows. Um, the back balcony looks like it's ready to come down, there's boards pulling from the front. I, I'm just curious why we take on, this, this building's been offered to the town several times prior to now. Uh, I'm curious why now we would, would take on another project when we know we've got, again, I can't remember what the numbers were, but a two-story building here that needs an elevator and everything else that we're gonna continue to be putting money into, from the looks of it, for, for the near future.
Yeah, the, the, the Old Town Home, Madison's doing great with grants for that elevator and everything. Um, our thought process, or my thought process is, as we go with this, grants, you know, if we end up with a town manager, which is hopeful, we get grants to try to put this in, but more so the space. The, the, the parking is, is huge, but also what a lot of you may not know is the septic system for the library is on this property. So if for some reason somebody purchases it, then now the people of the town are gonna have to worry if there is enough space to even put a septic system for the library. So there's other continuing circumstances to it. But for the price, I mean, I just looked at the old proposal in office, which was, they proposed it, and when was that, oh?
Two thousand and eight.
Two thousand and eight for a hundred and twenty-one thousand. So, I mean, the, the price of forty-five thousand dollars nowadays is, is, I think, a very fair price for what the town can gain from it. Yes, the building, I would have to guess probably needs two or three hundred thousand dollars in work, and I understand that. But the overall of it, I think we could, it, it's not something that we're gonna build next week or next year, or, it, it's, it's, it's gonna take time like the old town hall, it's just, I think where it's presented itself now is, is a great option for the town, now, um.
The Limington Academy has, has offered to let the town buy this property many a times, all of those, uh, uh, attempts have failed. Um, it's only a matter of time before the Limington Academy decides to, um, get rid of this building and property, and it, it, who knows where it can go to. But does the town have the, the money or a plan in place to renovate the gym at this point? No, we do not, but if, it is in our belief that if we don't act now to secure this property that chance to actually have it, use it, renovate it, will, will be gone.
I guess my only concern is, is the tax burden. Um, we're, we're already up there, as, as anyone that was at town meeting heard, the same thing was said there, was, was you got elderly, you've got disabled vets, you've got low-income people who are right now having a hard enough time, and once you take that on, you now have the liability to keep that building from becoming a liability to the, to anyone on the property. It, it becomes town-owned property that we have to maintain, and, and it's, it's gonna be a cost, and like I said, just, and, and I get it, I, I get that it's a good price right now, but the amount that's gonna go into it, you're gonna be years trying to find that, and we haven't finished the building that we've already been working on for, what, three years now, minimal, that we're putting thousands of dollars aside every year towards. Um, again, it's not that I have a problem with taking the building, I just think it's a liability and, and a, a tax burden for the taxpayers where we're already up there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Sure, go ahead.
Uh, Pete Childs, Norton Road, I'm one of the trustees of the academy. And two things, first of all, the trustees did take a vote really, uh, the year that they wanted to dispose of the property. And, uh, they also would prefer that, uh, the disposal would need by selling it to the town because we think, we're concerned about the parking, as you mentioned, and the septic system. Um, I don't think there's room anywhere at the library for them to install their own septic system. If the property were to end up as a private owner, um, I don't know, that would be up to them, how they feel about the current use. But the second thing I, um, wanted to bring up, the president of the trustees called me today, and, uh, she couldn't be here tonight, and she wanted to know that if, um, because of this problem we got on the money situation here, if we were to have another meeting and, uh, possibly vote to accept the ballot the way it's written, is that something you would be interested in? We'd have to do this very quickly, but I think we could probably make that happen. I, I don't know that, I don't know that the trustees would say yes, but, uh, um, if, if they did, is that, I wanted to put that out on the table as a possibility.
Uh, what, what is the actual suggestion?
Pardon me?
What, what is your actual suggestion?
Uh, the, the, what is the suggestion? Well, the suggestion is that, uh, if that's, uh, feasible for you folks, that we would call another meeting and see that if the trustees would revise their offer to accommodate essentially the error in the ballot, in other words, take nine payments instead of five payments. I, I, I don't know that we would vote for that, but it's.
Right, I, I think at this point in time, i- if we say yes, then I think the people of the town or people watching this is gonna go to the ballot and saw, or, or vote, right, wrong, or indifferent, if they vote yes, and then if for some reason you guys vote not to accept that, then we're in a predicament again that we've passed something that's not legit.
Got you.
So I, my honest, my opinion from this would be that without a solid yes from the, from the trustees, that I would probably push to, to try to tank this, vote no, and let's come back with the proper, proper, uh, literature on the November ballot.
Okay, but when you say a solid yes from the trustees, what, what do you mean by that?
Well, I, right now, as the public hearing, uh, you can't say, yes, we're, we're, we're gonna send that offer.
I, I, I'm not.
So I just don't wanna see us in a predicament where.
I'm not in a position to do that.
Right, right, so I'd hate to say, okay, folks, let's vote yes, and then you guys have your meeting and you decide, no, we want the five payments and nine, now we're in another predicament. So I think it's probably best at this point, my part, my opinion on the board here is, is that we try to get it out to people, just vote no, and we'll come back with the proper in, in, in.
I just hope you'll explain it to them.
Yes.
Thank you.
Not that we don't appreciate.
No, we really do appreciate.
But the right thing to do is just to ask people to vote it down, because you guys, at, at this point in time, this is not the language that you got, that the trustees voted on.
Right.
So.
Bud, please.
My name is Frank J. Foss, Frank J. Budfoss, uh, I'm treasurer of the Limington Academy trustees. And I just kinda wanted to put out some information, uh, about, about, about the gymnasium, a little bit about the history of it. First of all, we'll go back to Limington Academy, which was built in eighteen forty-eight. And part of that property later became, the, the gym became part of that property. Uh, the gymnasium, uh, property is at nine twenty-four Cape Road. It has a hundred and seventy feet of frontage on Route eleven, uh, and it goes back, uh, two, uh, two hundred and forty-seven feet of frontage on Route one seventeen, and it has, goes back a hundred and fifteen feet in depth. It was built back in roughly the late thirties, early forties, it was used by the academy for basketball games. At that time, that it was acquired, it had been a, uh, a stable for horses, and in addition was put on about a third further back to make it into a three-quarter size, uh, basketball court. Uh, the property comprises point six-five acres, and, uh, the town has valued the, uh, the building at two hundred and nine thousand seven hundred dollars, and the land value at eighty-three thousand one hundred dollars for, uh, a total of value on paper of two hundred and ninety-two dollars and, two hundred and ninety-two thousand eight hundred dollars. It's located on map U nine, lot twenty-nine. Back in the day, uh, the building was used by the H.B. Emory School. Um, I went there for, uh, in fifth grade for, to use the gym for, for physical, uh, not physical therapy, physical, physical, uh, PT, and, uh, it was gym, and we walked down there. Yeah, I probably need some physical therapy. Okay, um, the septic system is shared with the library. Uh, the gym was formerly used as a horse barn, in addition, extended it back in the nineteen forties. Here's a shared water supply, uh, with the, um, town hall and the, um, library. Um, a shared parking lot, uh, most of the parking spaces are on the gym property. There's, I think, two, possibly three, that go with the library. So we've had kind of a good neighbor policy throughout, uh, throughout history. When I go and mow over at the academy, I zip over and mow the library too, so that everything looks neat and even. Uh, I, my family goes back, uh, ten generations in town. Uh, my grandmother taught at the academy, my mother, my uncle, and my, uh, my aunt went there. My two sons went there when, uh, it was leased by MSAD six for additional classroom space. When the baby boomers, uh, had all the kids, uh, there wasn't enough room in the H.B. Emory, and so they, uh, they leased that building, uh, upstairs and down at the academy. This is a side note, Barney Lord Loughlin's great-grandfather was the first headmaster at the academy, I believe. Anyway, uh, the, the gym has had, had a past use of, uh, back in the day, uh, I remember it, not that many years ago, maybe thirty years ago, Thursday night men's basketball league. Uh, the Bonny Eagle cheerleaders used it for, to practice cheering, they brought mats in. Again, I, the H.B. Emory School used it, uh, Mr. Smith would, uh, single file us over from, from, uh, Limington, uh, from, from the H.B. Emory School over there. Uh, the Congregational Church leased it for, for a while, uh, there used to be family dances there, uh, prior to Nintendo. The library has utilized the gymnasium, uh, to, for book storage. Uh, when they were having T.C. Hafford seal the basement in the library, everything had to come out, and, uh, as a good neighbor, we allowed them to put everything that was in the bottom of that library over into the gym, uh, until that project was accomplished, and then everything went back. There was back in the sixties, a teen rally, Truth and Teens, which was a teen evangelism event there. The building has metal roofing, final siding. And I guess that's just about it. Oh, I will say that, uh, the liability insurance is four hundred and twenty-five dollars a year through Hanover, and the current CMP monthly bill is thirty-three dollars and sixty-seven cents. The other thing, uh, is that, uh, we have allowed overflow parking from the Old Town Hall and the Congregational Church sometimes packs there, so it's, it's not, it's, we kinda allow people to, to pack there. Uh, there was some tailgaters there, several vehicles, uh, just this last week. It sounded like they had just left Foxborough or something, but anyway. So I guess that's, that's about it. Uh, I think that it would be wonderful for the town to be able to acquire this further down the line, even if you don't have the money to jump right in and completely renovate it. It does have two bathrooms, the water is not hooked up, so that the pipes wouldn't freeze. Um, there's a, a, a men's room and a, and a, and a ladies' room, which also serves as a changing area during basketball games. And, uh, structurally, it's pretty solid, there, there are a couple of waves in the floor that will have to be taken care of on, on the basketball court. The bleachers could use a good, you know, coat of gray paint, and the walls and the ceilings could be painted. Um, there's some broken windows in the front that need to be replaced. It has a forced hot air furnace in the basement, and I guess that's about all I have to say, so just for your information, so.
Thank you, very much. Anybody else have any?
Oh, I would say that probably the amount of taxes that would go up with, over that period of time each year might equal about the cost of a Happy Meal at McDonald's, uh, person. When you think about it, and that, seeing how McDonald's. But I think, uh, that, I think it will more than hold its value as far as land and, and, uh, also, um, it will kind of preserve the integrity of the village district, the historic district. And I think it was, it's just that fact, uh, is probably worthwhile.
Absolutely.
We didn't have a proposal from someone once to put in marijuana growing inside the building. We didn't think it's a good idea, we could approximate.
To schools.
We did not, uh, we did not, uh, go with that. We had another proposal from a gentleman in town who's passed away, who wanted to put his antique cars in there. Oh, okay. And we didn't think that the, uh, we didn't think the basketball court would, would support that much weight from fifteen, five, ten, fifteen vehicles in there, whatever, whatever they could squeeze in, so. We just kinda went away with that, so.
Absolutely.
We've had chances to sell it in the past, it's been on the market before, but I've been holding out, because I kinda want the town to end up with it, I think, I can see the, the value of it.
Absolutely.
Parking, parking is, itself is, is very convenient for a lot of people to use it.
Thank you.
You bet.
I appreciate it.
Owen Sprague, Norton Road. Maybe you guys can answer this. I think the idea is great, uh, it's, it's, it's an awesome idea, I just have some general concerns in the back of my head, just driving by the building for years and years. Has anybody from the town taken a good, hard look at the building? Has, has there been a walkthrough, or anything like that?
We did, I have multiple pictures, uh, when we did the walkthrough. I took pictures inside and out.
Okay.
Owen, I can, I can, uh, have those available here...
Yeah.
...at the town office for anybody to look at.
Yeah, I just wasn't sure how involved that...
Yes.
...that was.
Oh, definitely.
I was just curious, before you're, you're asking the taxpayer to vote on that, you know, with your recommendation, has anybody actually taken a look at it, and its general state? So, I just was curious on that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Too bad you couldn't get the Boy Scouts to go in and just get some rollers and paint the bleachers and, you know, get some merit badge points and stuff like that. That's the way it used to be done back in the old days, you know, people volunteer and just...
They, they still do Eagle Scout projects.
Save the, save the taxpayers money by just having volunteers come in and donate an hour or two here and there.
Are there, are there any other discussion? Yes, Bonnie, please. I thank you all for sticking around, I know it's getting late, and I, we appreciate you, you taking your time.
Hi, Lord Loughlin, could you just advise us the technicality of, um, what's happening tonight? It's you advising the townspeople to vote no for this, I hear you. And, um, those of us who are here tonight hear you, and those of, those folks who might watch the video will hear you, but is that enough? First of all, is it also technically the way to do it? I'm, it probably is, because, and secondly, what happens if people vote for it, uh, the way it is written? And they don't hear the message tonight?
No, the, the, the problem is, it's on the ballot, and the ballot's printed. Um, there's nothing we can do about that. If it passes, I, I believe, for some reason, we would have to either hope that they would accept, or we would just have to go, I think that we'd have to go back and do a...
Special.
Yeah, a special meeting to, to change the literature on that. So, all we're trying to do is just get it out there, you know? It was an oversight, I, I don't know how. I was, I don't know how, I missed it, I don't know how...
It was, it was a bad, it was miscommunication between the board and, and the, uh, Limington Academy trustees.
Yeah, when we...
Plain and simple.
We, yeah, we heard it, either heard it wrong, we just, it, it never, it was never written down. I think it was in, in conversation, and then it just went awry, and that's our fault, so...
There was a written proposal.
We had a written proposal for the purchase of, of the gym, but we did not have a written proposal for a payment plan regarding the purchase of the gym.
It had the total price, but not...
I think you did, but there was a second letter that came in from us.
I, I, I saw the first.
I know we have the...
Yeah, I'm there at this point. Bonnie?
Sorry. So, given that it might actually be voted on, hopefully the word will go out. The, the words, I'm so glad Bud is here and, and Pete is here. In the wording, as it is now, it says, "and accompanying property." Something about the Limington Academy Gym and accompanying property, I think, is the phrase.
The land that it sits on.
And so, you know, uh, purchasing a building that comes along with accompanying property, I guess, there's a part of me that just wonders if that's good enough for, for the people who would be endorsing that plan, uh, the voters, the, the people who eventually own the building, the, the townspeople? Because I think I, really, the accompanying property, isn't it true that there are two lots in U nine that are the Limington Academy Gym property, or am I wrong? Is it only one? I thought it was lot twenty-nine and lot thirty, or is that...
On the tax map, it's one lot.
What, which is which one? Do you all know that? If not...
I don't have the, the, the lot number for you.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
I was just thinking that the way it's worded is a...
At U nine, lot twenty-nine, nine twenty-four Cape Road.
Thank you, Frank.
And the, uh, valuation and a picture of the property and, uh, the particulars about, you know, the, the size of the property and, uh, you know, whether it has a, has access to an ATV, well, the bill, uh...
Well, I, I guess, given what you've said tonight, and what the academy trustees endorse also, it seems that ideally, it will be voted down for now. And then the rewrite, in my opinion, should specify what the lot number is, uh, for the townspeople, so we know what we're endorsing as a purchase. But, you know, I hear your explanation.
That will be added, thank you.
And in that situation too, we would have another public hearing, it would be announced again, and for anybody to come and, and, and speak on behalf of yea, nay, it, it would start, start the process over again, so...
Just a quick curiosity question is, if, if it's not written properly on the ballot, and I, I get that the ballots are all printed, how can we even legally vote on it? Why can't that, i- is there a reason that question can't be stricken from this particular ballot?
I don't, I don't, I don't have that.
We have a liability issue if we voted in.
We're gonna check with, with, uh, the, the clerk's office and make sure that we follow proper, you know, guidelines for...
Gotcha, I just worry that, you know, people don't see this, or whatever, and people voted in, but then we voted in, and...
If, if we can, we will...
They don't, they don't agree to the terms that are, we're voting on.
Right.
If we can, we will supply...
I would like to black it out, really, no, seriously, I'd like to do it right away with it, if we could.
That would be my...
And if we legally can, then I'm gonna, I, I'm gonna, I, I'm gonna push for that.
Do that to every...
Yeah, just, I mean, if I gotta come up here and, and block out everyone, I will, because it's just easier way to do it.
It's just one of those things that I don't, if, if we voted in...
Right, no, no, I'm with you.
Then, we're not really vote, we went through this, I think, at town meeting on a couple of things where things had gotten changed, and I, I get that you can't now change what it says, but is there any reason that can't be stricken right off it, so that we're not even voting on it at this, on this particular referendum?
We didn't have time today in office to do it, and, and I, we were just talking, I think it was, you were at my shop Tuesday? We'd, we, he'd stopped by, and I, I wish we could, I wish it weren't up to, I wish it was an easy situation, but it's not. But if we can stricken it, then we will definitely stricken it.
Lacey, I just, I wonder the legality...
Yep, and we'll check with our...
What the legality's behind it, or if we voted in, and then all of a sudden, we can't purchase it, that, the way that it's written.
Well, they're a little strong on the trustees to, so, agree with the terms.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions, uh, regarding the Limington Academy Gym? If there are no more questions regarding the Limington Academy Gym, uh, Lacey, would you like to, have you spoken?
I'm good.
Okay. Then, I believe we can...
I'll make a motion that we adjourn the public hearing.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the public hearing. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Public hearing...